2023 to order. Please rise and join me in the pledge of allegiance.
I begin. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call of members, please.
Commissioner Gonzalez, Commissioner Moody, Commissioner Timmons, Vice Chair Sparza, Chair Weisenberger.
Here. Approval of minutes from June 7, 2023. We need a motion to approve. Okay, it's been moved in second. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Gonzalez, Commissioner Moody, Commissioner Timmons, Vice Chair Sparza, Chair Weisenberger.
Yes. Any public comments at this point, Mr. Carver? Okay. Then we have some carryover business from last time. Agenda item number two, the North Paramount Gateway Specific Plan Project. And I know we have a staff report.
Yes, sir. Yes, Mr. Chairman, members of the commission. So this was continued from the May meeting to the June meeting and then at the June meeting to this evening. And John King will take you through a presentation on the report. I believe there are people in the audience that would like to speak, and I do have some emails that I would like to read into the record also afterwards. Go ahead, John.
Thank you, John. Thank you, Chair. And commissioners. So as John mentioned, this is the North Paramount Gateway Specific Plan. And this has been in the works for quite a few years, actually, and we're happy to bring it before you this evening. So again, it is a recommendation. Your recommendation goes to the city council toward this plan, a specific plan. So just to back up a bit, just what is a specific plan? A specific plan is a, well, like it says, it kind of focuses in on a certain area and it furthers a vision for a sense of place in implementing the city's general plan. So when a city council adopts a specific plan by ordinance, it becomes the zoning code. It becomes part of the municipal code. So it's regulatory, but it also provides a vision. It also gives, it looks ahead to what that particular property or area of the city is to be over many, many years. So this isn't something that is like a traditional project where you approve it and someone starts building. This is a very long-term plan, say a 30, 40, 50-year plan. So what it does, what this plan does is it combines two existing specific plans. We have on the books the Clearwater North Specific Plan, and we have the Howe-Orazaba Specific Plan. And you can see on this slide kind of the location where they are. They are north of Rosecrans Avenue, and they're on both sides of Paramount Boulevard. Clearwater North is on the west side of Paramount Boulevard and south of the 105 freeway, the Century Freeway, and to the east of the Union Pacific Railroad. So in this case, it's, that plan area is also north of the metro right-of-way, the vacant metro right-of-way, when the future will be a part of the West Santa Ana Branch Railway. And then on the other side, Howe-Orazaba, also north of Rosecrans, and it goes from Paramount to Anderson, and just kind of wiggles around there. The dashed area of both of these existing plans, or those existing areas, what the proposed Clearwater North Plan would do would combine them into a single area and also fill in those gaps so you can actually have the mouse where you can, here we go. See, it would fill in this area, which is warehousing, Cal-Aero and whatnot, and on the other side of Paramount Boulevard, and the corner where there's a 7-Eleven at Rosecrans and Paramount, some other properties there. So slightly expanding those areas and combining them. So a little bit of background, after taking public comment and really guiding this to meet both state law and community needs, after getting feedback from the public, we brought this to the Planning Commission in October 2021. The Planning Commission at the time reviewed the plan, and there were no concerns. And we followed up with their city council review. City council reviewed the plan and also had no concerns. And with that, also that month, the city council, they gave us the direction to go ahead and award a contract to EP, a company called EPD Solutions, to put together the environmental impact report. So when you do a project like this, like all projects, we have to go through CEQA, the California Environmental Quality Act, and we knew that this was the large enough scope to go to the fullest scale, the platinum level, which is the environmental impact report. EPD Solutions has been working on that since then. So the EIR is now complete, the final EIR, and ready for city council certification with the Planning Commission recommendation of approval. So going back to this plan that was developed and reviewed by the Planning Commission and city council, it has a number of goals and guiding principles, and it has a number of different areas. There's commercial, residential, mixed-use, design. So kind of to go through these briefly, on the commercial side, one of the goals is to extend what we call downtown Paramount, which is basically where we are here, up to more or less Alondra Boulevard, extend it northward along Paramount and to increase the amount variety and quality. That's kind of the big thing, the quality of commercial uses to reinforce this area as one of the gateways to the city. On the residential side, the city absolutely does not want to displace existing residents. That's a guiding principle. So without displacing existing residents, to increase the supply of housing units to address concerns for affordability and overcrowding. So this is a very targeted plan, although it is a good number of acres, 112 acres. It's, the city is targeting areas that, there's a warehouse, there's a nursery, there's a self-serve car wash, there's an auto repair business behind a chain-link fence. So those are the areas that the city is looking at, that it would be much better if the state's saying, we have to have more housing, we have to have our fair share. This is where we want them to go. And then mixed use. So as you know, a mixed-use development has a combination of uses. So when we hear about it, typically we're thinking about a combination of housing and some other type, usually commercial. So you have horizontal mixed use, maybe a, you know, business in the front, housing in a separate building in the back. But in this case, we're talking about vertical mixed use, so, but only along Paramount Boulevard and Rosecrans Avenue to have mixed-use opportunities where you have, if you're going to have housing in this area, to make sure to still have some businesses on the first floor. So to develop Paramount and Rosecrans as attractive mixed-use corridors, and being aware that somewhere down the line, we don't know if it's, you know, Metro keeps pushing back the schedule, but there will be a future light rail station, so maybe it could tie into that. And then design, we have a number of design requirements. If there is a project that the property owner wants to do, wants to move forward on, and the city supports. Mobility, mobility in the public realm, so movements, transportation, cars. So this, part of the plan is to encourage the use of active transportation and public transit, including the future light rail. Just to say right off the bat, we know this is Los Angeles County. We have our, almost everyone in this room, I'm sure, has a car, and we're not going to get rid of it, our cars. We have to get around to, you know, all over. But what this, the idea of this is to make it easier, so maybe one day out of the week, you know, you walk somewhere. Or maybe there's a, this allows for development of an area in this, in here where you can walk to the grocery store and walk your groceries back home. So maybe there's somewhere in this area that can be walkable, and if you're going to walk, make it a pleasant walk, an attractive walk, and a safe walk. And same, you know, if you have a bicycle, maybe you could bike nearby and have a nice place for it to be hooked up to and not have to, you know, we've seen bikes in the bushes and whatnot. Parks and open space, so as needed, there's not, there's very, as you know, there's very limited space, but there is a goal, possible, to increase recreational space in this area. SPA is specific plan area. Sustainability, I think the city has very much turned a corner, and like just about every city, we're looking ahead to environmental sustainability and doing what we can. So this plan does promote community health, well-being, and safety through focused sustainability applications. We can't do it all, but we want to do what makes sense for Paramount. So as I mentioned, there was a lot of community feedback. So this went through, it's kind of a little tricky, you know, we had COVID in the middle of all this, but had some pop-up, we call them, you know, pop-up workshops where you set up at the Friday Night Market, we set up at the Summer Concert Series, take questions, and we did have a formal workshop. We got community feedback, and, oh, there was an online survey as well, and a number of other methods, getting the word out. Providing a mix of, the community speaks and spoke, and they said they would like a mix of uses. They want more cafes, restaurants, a market in this area. They want the employment, they, you know, they might have a job in another city in LA County, preferably, I think we all have that dream, to live fairly close to where we live. Parking, so again, parking, it's almost like parking, parking, parking. This is our biggest concern. This is, we're living this in all of our cities, and it is only getting worse. So what we want with this plan is to make sure that if someone is to develop, to build something, that they do provide onsite parking, and also being aware that there are some other strategies, like for example, Metro is saying they're going to build a 740-car parking lot on Rosecrans Avenue, a little bit, not far from this. Improve safety walkability, provide open space, and with a focus on youth and seniors. We have a, you might know there's a walking club in town that's geared toward seniors. That need is there. The city just moved the senior, kind of a senior workout, I'm not sure the exact name, but when they moved the location at Paramount Park, it doubled the number of people. So there are seniors that want that open space. And we're also, it's only getting more expensive, so we want, the city is looking for housing for all income levels, including affordable housing. We have, there is a need for market-rate housing, but also to acknowledge that there's very much a need for affordable housing. This map you see before you is the existing zoning map for this area. So this plan requires a zone change, so changing from this traditional zoning to the zone, the specific plan zone. You can see there's a mix of multiple-family residential, which is the kind of, what color this is, kind of a peachy color. That's what most of this area is, it's zoned for multiple-family residential. Actually, if you look in our zoning code, which I have before me, the zoning code allows for up to 70 units per acre. When the plan, the existing plan was put together in the 80s, voters voted in a limit of 22 units per acre. But part, one of the main reasons we're here this evening is the state is saying, we cannot stick with that 22 units per acre, we have to cast that aside. So, but that's what's allowed now, 22 units per acre by that, what's technically what the voters voted in. A mix of commercial, a mix of commercial manufacturing, and PDPS, which is that pink area, it's just strategic zoning from the 1980s that called for a mix of different uses. Here's what's proposed, so it's, a lot of it, you'll see that same peachy color. So again, the city does not want much change in the vast majority of this plan area. There's this, you know, how it is is how it is, but the state is saying we do have, we have to increase the density to 30 units per acre. So that's what's in there. You know, there are a couple other areas. HMHD, which is kind of this orangish area, or darker, I really don't know what color that is, but that allows for up to 40 units per acre. And that's pretty much what's there now. So if you think of what's next to, up here in the north, that's the enclave, formerly the Century Place Apartments. That's actually developed at 70-plus units per acre. So that's what's there. The other areas, so beyond that, it's mixed use. So the reddish is the MU1, mixed-use medium density, and this other darker color is MU2, mixed-use high density, so either 30 units per acre or 40 units per acre for those areas. And again, these are very targeted, very limited. The idea is if those warehouses go away, if the property owner does want to develop or sell to someone who would develop, that's where it would be. So on to sustainability, there are some, in the plan, there's, it's looking for bringing the landscaping and the water issues into modern times. These are things that we're supposed to do as a city. So swales, those are, you might have seen these before, long, narrow landscape depressions. So it's basically a landscape area that's a little bit inset into the ground, and it's used to collect water and filter the water, so the stormwater is cleaned up by, you know, natural methods, similar to rain gardens. Curb extensions, those are extensions of the street edge to the street, so it may make it safer to cross some of these streets, but it also has the effect of the water can be diverted toward them to allow the water to infiltrate and be clean before reaching the storm drain and before going to the river. And other, you know, other water treatment. So while we're here, just, we're to curb extension, so we do have some curb extensions here in downtown Paramount, where the former Starbucks was at Paramount and Jackson. You see the curb kind of juts out a little bit more just to make it a little safer to cross. That may not be possible going into Paramount Boulevard, but on the cross streets, it's very possible to make it safer to cross there. So here's some photos, top right is kind of interesting, those are solar panel chargers, so you can go there and charge your phone, they have that in Pico Rivera. And here's the pedestrian improvements, so you could see that, just making it a nicer place to walk and safer, they're actually all across Paramount, this, there are, the fact is, this is the location for the most accidents, car-to-car, car-to-person, car-to-bicyclists, so with different results. Not great. So that's what we're looking for, just bringing this into the present, some of the things that just about every other city is doing. How do we do this? So there's some points here. So to attract focused mixed use and residential development, the plan can make the area attractive to quality housing at targeted locations, and as I mentioned, the nursery auto repair. Not every location is ideal, and the fact is, much of this area is already developed, and the property owners there are probably doing okay, and it probably wouldn't be worth it to demolish what's there and start over. So most owners don't do that, and this area is only, allows only a modest increase in densities, so it doesn't really pencil out to demolish altogether and build up. Preserve and create a variety of housing types where appropriate, third, invest in the public realm and civic infrastructure. So regardless of, if there are no changes to the developments, if, even if we get zero development, the least we could do is put in streetscapes, public space, some shared parking situations to, just to make it more walkable, attractive, safer, and then approve the retail offerings and attract missing services. So there may be, there's an opportunity, so again, groceries, financial, there's banks here in closer to City Hall, but not up north here. So also to make this change, actually, before the zone change, we're supposed to, the city council would have to amend the general plan. So the general plan is the long-term guide for the, for development, and the land use element of the general plan is that, the specific long-term guide. So approving this plan requires changing the land use designation of the land use element, so that area of the Clearwater North and Howe-Orazaba would be designated, redesignated as North Paramount Gateway Specific Plan, and would include those extra properties we talked about. So again, this was reviewed by the city council and the Planning Commission in late 2021. So what's been going on since then? It's the EIR. So the Environmental Impact Report, which you have a copy of and is also on the city website, it's a lot of work. So it's all encompassing all, many different topic areas that we'll get into. But why do we do this? It is state law, but it's useful for the public and decision-makers. It gives information for a project, a development, and the implications. And it provides detailed information on existing baselines. So baseline is, this is how it is now, but if you do any kinds of change, what's going to happen? Is there going to be more or less noise, traffic, you know, those are the big ones, utilities? And it identifies, assesses the impacts of the proposed activities, and it provides mitigation measures to reduce environmental impacts. So just a word on mitigation measures, what are they? So CEQA, the California Environmental Quality Act, requires agencies to impose feasible mitigation measures for a project to substantially lessen or avoid the significant effects of a project on the physical environment. And I was basically reading that from the codes. So mitigation can avoid the impact, minimize the impact by limiting its degree or magnitude, or rectifying the impact by repairing, rehabilitating, or restoring that particular environmental resource. So here's the issue areas that were evaluated. There were, the CEQA requires an agency to look at a many more, well, not many more, a few more topics such as minerals, but there, it's not an issue of minerals in this urban setting. So here are the issue areas that were specifically evaluated, so you can kind of look at that. The key ones are aesthetics, air quality, cultural resources, energy, I realize I'm reading all of them, greenhouse gas emissions, hazards, water, noise, public services, transportation, utilities, I can't forget tribal cultural resources. As you know, this is, as you review these types of projects, contractors are obligated to stop construction when they, if they find human remains or think that they see human remains, and a lot of that ties into tribal cultural resources. So even with the application of feasible mitigation measures, there are what are called significant and unavoidable impacts, and there are three of these types of areas where there are significant and avoidable impacts. So by state law, if that's the case, then the city council has to adopt what's called a statement of overriding considerations. And so finding that, and so what you do is you kind of, you look at the benefits of the plan and see if they outweigh the, any of these possible negative effects, and all in all, so we'll get into it in a moment, but the bottom line is that staff recommends, that you recommend to the city council to adopt that statement of overriding considerations. And those three areas are air quality, greenhouse gas emissions, and noise. And just to point off, point out off the top, well, there is a lot of, almost 100% overlap, close to 100% overlap with air quality and greenhouse gas emissions, there's very similar. But that and noise, by and large, even if this project did not take place, just by virtue of living in the Los Angeles County air basin with the, some say that, yeah, it is the worst air quality in the country, we're already, the area is over the, you know, the trigger, so that we're, it's not, as you know, it's not the best area in the world. So you're going to have that one way or another. But how are we going to make it better? And we'll get into that, too. So the statement of overriding conditions has six parts, which we have here. Number one, substantial mitigation has been provided to further reduce impacts, and the impacts have been mitigated to the maximum extent feasible, and then analysis conducted is conservative to provide for the maximum level of scrutiny and disclosure. I should point that out, this entire process with the EIR is done with a high level of, highest level of being conservative, high level of conservativity. So it is, the ER assumes kind of, it's called the worst-case scenario, which is every single property owner at the same time decided to develop their property at the same time, whether they had the funds to do so or not. It assumes that all this is happening at once. So keep that in mind. It's very conservative. The North Paramount Gateway Specific Plan, this plan approach will concentrate new development near transit, and it's consistent with state policy. So a lot of this is, we're following along with state mandates. Three, the plan would provide more opportunities for affordable housing, encourage transit-oriented development, promote active transportation, improve access to transit, reduce vehicle miles traveled, VNT, and streamline the review for future development projects. But I do want to add, it could streamline, to some extent, this is helpful if we have a project that we're in 100% consensus, that the property owner wants to do, and the city looks forward to, and the community is okay with. A lot of things have to fall into place. Number four, the build-out of the plan would result in an improvement of the projected jobs-to-household ratio, and that's a benefit. So again, more people want to work closer to where they live, reduce those miles traveling, those long commutes. Five, the plan provides for additional housing to support the regionally forecasted increase in economic activities and employment increases. Yeah, we can't get away from that, the state is requiring every city to plan for more housing, more and more. The plan provides for a higher density, slightly higher density, and mixed-use residential developments that would accommodate the RENA, the Regional Housing Need Assessment, that's come down from the state to the region through SCAG, Southern California Association of Governments, to the city. It promotes development of affordable units as projects that would be eligible for a density bonus if needed or if agreed upon incentives. So let's talk about those mitigations. So there, we're not going to get away from air quality issues, that's just a fact of our lives. It's beyond us, but we can do our best. So this plan goes beyond what's on the books, so if you approve this, approve this plan, you and the city council, it will take a good bite out of air quality issues, both on the construction side and the operational side, the long-term side. So the proposed measures include project dust control, so having some high-end dust control measures during construction, higher construction equipment emission standards, so in some cases even requiring electric equipments for some of their construction equipment, low emitting paints, low VOCs, electric construction equipment again, and this is the big thing, you don't see very often, enhanced energy efficiency. So it requires projects to go above and beyond the existing Title 24 with the Energy Code. So the building code ties into the Energy Code and requires projects to meet the state's Title 24. These projects would have to go above that, so they would have to find, there's a list in here of ways to do that, or they could just be creative on their own, it's not prescriptive, but it's not, doesn't tell you exactly how to do it, you just have to do it. Meet that 5% above code requirements. Same with water, this also requires enhanced water conservation. And you'll see, like I mentioned, there's overlap with greenhouse gases, it's almost the same in that list. And then noise, another thing, noise, just being in an urban setting, we have a freeway, we have Paramount's, you know, fairly busy street, and those mitigations include construction equipment types, construction equipment measures, installation of construction noise barriers, and noise attenuation features in building construction. So think of thicker windows, triple-pane windows, the building can be designed a certain way to be oriented away from the noise and to focus more inward, if there's, say, there's a courtyard in the inward. And all these mitigations measures are included in the mitigation monitoring and reporting program before you. So just to kind of wrap it up, and it's kind of lengthy, the plan does a number of positive things, so in our analysis, this is worth supporting. The plan updates very outdated plans that were written up in the 1980s, and again, if we just let the, here's the kind of fear, the plan that's on the books, though, as written, it goes up to 70 units per acre, so it's way above what anybody's calling for at this point. We're scaling it way back, but it does lift up to what the state's requiring, and then on Paramount Boulevard to have a little boost for some mixed-use ideas. The plan complies with state law and mandates from the Department of Housing and Community Development, which is, which you might, you've heard, they now have an enforcement arm, so if we don't do things like this, we're, they're going to come down on us, and the worst case, you might have heard, you've been reading about Huntington Beach, it's kind of challenging the state, they're going to end up being, going under receivership if they continue down that path. We don't want to be taken over by our planning department, be staffed by the state. The plan implements the housing element as adopted by the city council, it is in action by the city council. The plan meets the goal to preserve the existing housing in the area and avoid displacement. Again, we do not want people to be displaced. This is their home. The plan increases neighborhood livability with infrastructure improvements, and again, the focus for change will be on blighted or underutilized commercial properties, but only if the property owner is willing, only if the city sees a benefit for the city and the residents. So our recommendations, there are four actions. The first involves the EIR. The Environmental Impact Report is to approve certification of the EIR, approve the mitigation monitoring and reporting program, and adopt a statement of overriding considerations, all recommendations for the council. of overriding considerations, all recommendations for the council. Second is a recommendation that the council, city council approve the general plan amendment, so just basically redesignate in this area. Third, recommending to the city council approve the zone change. And finally, recommending to the city council approve a zoning ordinance text amendment, which basically takes this plan and incorporates it into the municipal code. I would want to add, final kind of wrap-up is that the EPD Solutions, the firm that put the ER together, is here, we're represented, they're represented here. So, if you have any very detailed, more detailed questions than what I just went over, yeah, they'd be more than happy to answer. And with that, we're recommending that you adopt the resolutions, and we're all happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, John. That was a mouthful.
Yes. But we're, we like it.
Okay. Any questions here from our commissioners? Okay, then let's, this is a continued public hearing, so we've already opened that portion of it. John, do we have some testimony tonight?
Yes, I believe there's several people in the audience who would like to come up and talk, if you want, like to come up now in the audience to speak. You want to come up to the podium? And then, if you could just turn the microphone on? Thank you.
Thank you. Hi, yes, I'm just concerned, I live in that area that you guys want, I live right next to the car wash, and as it is, we already, I've gotten many tickets, my family got in many tickets for parking in red, because we don't have no parking space. There's sense where we have, we know, have to walk two blocks to get to our house to be able to park, and I don't think that's fair. If they're going to come in with more housing, and more, there's going to create a lot more traffic, a lot more cars, a lot more people, I mean, every household at least has three cars, because we as a family, we, it took us a while to get a house in Paramount, because they all say Paramount is a subsidy to stay, it's a family city, and they all stay. It's really hard to find a nice house in Paramount. So, it took us a while for my husband to find a house for our family. We don't want to go anywhere else. But, you know, as it is, we have a lot of traffic, we get a lot of tickets, we don't know what to do anymore, and if you, like I said, if you bring more construction to our side of the street, that's going to bring a lot more cars. Family do not just have one car at that house. Not a lot of people are going to walk, like you said, not a lot of people are going to bike, like you said, they're not, because we don't have the time, we work, we come home late, we have to get a car to go get our groceries, we're not going to come home and just grab a bike, that's not going to happen. I don't think that's going to happen. And I'm just concerned. You know, I've been at my house now for 12 years, I love where I live, I mean, besides having now all those people doing, you know, with their cars and all the noise, you're right, there's a lot of noise, and now with that big building having a Section 8 admitted there, there's a lot more stuff that is going on, on those big apartments. But, I mean, I'm just concerned, I don't want to move, and as it is, I have a good payment where my husband and I are going to retire in a few years. We cannot afford to move out of there. We cannot afford, I mean, we planned it where we could have a house where we could stay, make our payment, and travel, because that's what we plan for when we retire, you know, so that's my concern.
Thank you. Did you want to leave your name for the record?
Sir, my name is Maria Ortiz.
Okay. And, okay, thank you.
I have actually a few questions.
John.
So, in the presentation, John mentioned that the idea is not to, I guess, remove any of the residents or any, or do any changes like that, but then he mentions to change the zone areas, right? So, how is that going to work if you're not removing residents, and what's the point of changing the zone areas? How are you going to meet those requirements? That's what the study is asking for.
So, it just puts into place for the future. It doesn't mean that you have to do any changes, or that anything would change where you live or own property, it just puts a framework into place for the future, like 25 years into the future.
Then, the other point was about the outreach, because this meeting, or this topic was supposed to be mentioned in the May meeting, as you mentioned earlier, right? And then in that meeting, if we're really trying to get to the outreach for the public, it was changed, and there was a lot more people here during the meeting. But now, when it was changed, those people were here because we received a letter saying, oh, we're going to talk about this topic here. But now, for that meeting, I didn't receive a letter, we didn't receive anything, so I'm just worried about the people that are not here, if they want to voice their opinion, right? And then, for the, you mentioned, oh, there was outreach programs and Friday night markets and things like that, but that only works for people that go to the markets. Or the people that live in those areas didn't go to the market, and there's no, I don't know, I just want to make sure that they hear what the plan is. I know you mentioned you don't want to remove the residents, but just wanted to bring that up. I think, I had another one, but I'll come back up. All right, thank you. I don't remember my question, I kind of went in a blur, but that's it.
Thank you.
Sir, would you like to state your name for the record as well?
It's Emmanuel Diaz.
Thank you, sir.
Hello, my name is Miguel Angel Samayoah, my wife, we live right on the corner behind the, the car wash, and soon we got to Paramount, we started living in Paramount, I was for 11 years in a row volunteer in the soccer program for Paramount. 11 years in a row working with the Paramount Parking Recreations like a soccer coach, and we love Paramount, we love to live in Paramount. Now, the project that you guys got in mind, it is a wonderful project. It will bring more, better economy for the city, it will be much better, but my point right now, it's about safety, too. You guys talking about parking and another stuff, but what about safety? Right now, right in my corner, Pearl and Palm and McClure, there is no day, not even a one day that nobody make a donut right in, right in front of my house, we live right in the corner. Last week, one car hit another car because he was making donuts right there. The good thing that he hit another car, not a little kid, not another person. And right behind my house, there's a big building right next to the, to the freeway, there is, something happened right there in those apartment buildings. Every day, there is a police car right there. Two days ago, one kid, a bunch of kids was walking just to those apartments, one guy I saw on my secure cameras, give something to another guys, going to my house and kick my door, simple like that, and they just keep walking, right next to the apartment buildings. So, it sounds very good for the city, grow up the city very well, looks very nice, but my, one of my first concerns is what about safety? It will bring a lot of people right there, what kind of people? It will bring more houses and everything, and other people coming to our city, but safety is my concern. Probably my number one concern, because there's a lot of little kids right there. Right behind is an elementary school, too, Roosevelt Elementary School. So, that's my number one concern. Thank you.
Mr. Chair, if there's nobody else in the audience, then I would like to read the emails that we received. These are not necessarily in favor or opposed, they're just asking questions, so I'll read the question, and then John King's response back to the person, there's, I think I've got four of them to read. So, the first one is from, oh, Happy Faces Family Childcare, and their question, hello, Planning Commissioner, I'm a homeowner at 14005 Arthur Avenue, and I want to know, will our property become part of eminent domain due to the gateway-specific plan project? And then the response was, her name was Jennifer, I apologize. Jennifer, thank you for writing regarding the North Paramount Gateway specific plan. Please note that although there is a Planning Commission meeting this evening at 6:00 PM at City Hall, I'm writing back as the Planning Commission discussion about this plan will be postponed to the July 5th Planning Commission meeting. I'd like to, I'd like to have an answer well before that time. There is absolutely no discussion for type of eminent domain with the, with Gateway Paramount specific plan. It is only a plan in a property owner who voluntarily wishes to build another house, or to may have the option to do so if there is enough space on the property. However, looking at an overhead photo of your neighborhood, there are very few properties with space or opportunity for this kind of change. If approved, the plan will bring the city into compliance with the State of California. Right now, the city allows 22 homes per acre, and the plan will raise that along Paramount, I'm sorry, along Arthur Avenue to a possible 30 homes per acre. If the information I'm looking at is correct, there are 22 homes at 14005 Arthur, and the entire property is .756 of an acre. That means there is already about 30 homes per acre where you live, there's no space for more housing, as you know. The plan would also allow a limited amount of housing along Paramount Boulevard between Rosecrans and the freeway, and on the north side of Rosecrans Avenue between Paramount and Anderson, but only if the housing is built on top of businesses. Again, this is all voluntary for property owner who choose to do so. From the city perspective, this might make sense in the future on properties with warehouses, a car wash, or an auto repair shop, but most other properties are already built out. I hope this information helps. And then, John just gives contact information. And then, the second one is from...
John, can I start?
Yes, I'm sorry.
Is there, I heard the word eminent domain.
Mm-hmm.
Does any of that apply with this, this project?
No, they're absolutely, yeah, John.
No. No eminent domain.
Mr. Chair, there's no eminent domain in this at all.
Okay, great, okay. So, the second email is from Anna Osaitia, and, "To whom it may concern, please address the following concerns at the May 3 public hearing. This area is heavily overpopulated as is, with very limited parking available for current homeowners. Please address the oversaturation of vehicles this plan will cause and the effect it will have on property value of existing homes and traffic control. Please also address the demographics targeted to reside in new dwellings, specifically in relation to public housing, homeless shelters, and the types of businesses this project is intending to attract and or displace. Describe the purpose intended for rezoning of our homes, and who are the primary stakeholders for this project." And then, John's response is, "Anna, thank you for writing. Most of the proposed North Paramount Gateway specific plan is in response to requirements of the California Department of Housing and Community Development, HCD. HCD is a state of California agency that is mandating an increase in housing density from Paramount's cap of 22 housing units per acre to 30 units per acre. The main change is allowing mixed-use developments, businesses on the first floor and housing on upper floors, along Paramount Boulevard and Rosecrans Avenue, up to 40 housing units per acre. This is all voluntary, not mandated by the city, and the goal is to minimize displacement. This is a long-term plan, and the city anticipates gradual change." For more information, John gives a link to the housing element, and then he talks about some properties that, let's see, on pages 92 to 94, you'll see the nine properties in North Paramount are specifically identified in the plan. So, I'm not quite sure what that's answering, but let me go on. Regarding parking, new housing developments in most of the plan area will need to provide four parking spaces per home, two dedicated to a specific home and two guest parking places. For new mixed-use buildings along Paramount or Rosecrans, required parking will be one parking space per home, and two parking spaces for every 1,000 square feet of commercial space. Homeless shelters would be prohibited in this area. Demographics, the only targeted demographics are diversity of household incomes with a range of housing types and affordability levels. And I'd like to also share that the hearing will be postponed at least one month, and that's the end of that one. Any questions on that? And then, the third one is from, let's see, it don't look like I have a name, doesn't look like I have a name. It's a little bit long, so bear with me. Dear Planning Commission, I'm writing to express my concerns regarding the North Paramount Gateway specific plan project and its potential impact on my neighborhood. Specifically, I am worried about the proposed increase in density and its effects on traffic congestion and parking availability in the area. As a resident of this neighborhood, I have already noticed the negative impact of the excessive red lines painted in the area, which have only made parking more difficult. Additionally, I am concerned about the lack of police presence after a certain time, as the Lakewood police, whom we rely on, give priority to the city of Lakewood, and most of our calls get put aside. Moreover, I am concerned that the increased density will attract more transients, as we already have a transient issue in the area, and the metro system is frequently used by them. The addition of more apartments, duplexes, and multiple-family homes will only exacerbate these issues. Crime rates are already high in this area, and I fear that gentrifying a city that is dominantly Hispanic and African-American, and has a significant population of low-income families, will only make these issues worse. I also have several questions about the proposed changes and their impact on my neighborhood. Firstly, can you clarify the specific impact of the North Paramount Gateway specific plan on my neighborhood? Are there any changes in zoning or land use designations in my area? Secondly, how will the proposed rezoning affect the current housing stock in the area? Will any existing homes or buildings be impacted? Thirdly, what new parking solutions or public transportation options will be introduced to mitigate the impact of the increased density? Fourthly, will the rezoning and proposed development affect property values, and if so, how will the city address negative impacts on property values? Fifthly, will there be any changes in public transportation services, such as bus routes or schedules, as a result of this specific plan? Sixthly, what specific sustainability measures will be implemented in the proposed land use plan to support sustainability efforts and economic vitality in the area? Seventhly, I would like to know about the potential environmental impacts of the project, such as air and water quality, habitat preservation, and noise levels, and how will they be mitigated? Eighthly, can you provide a timeline for implementing the proposed traffic specific plan? What can residents expect to see, when can residents expect to see changes in their neighborhood? Ninthly, how will the city ensure that community input is considered during the implementation of the plan? Will there be additional opportunities for public input and feedback as the plan is implemented? Finally, what are the potential economic benefits of the proposed project for the city and its residents? Will there be any new job opportunities or businesses introduced? Thank you for taking the time to read my concerns and questions. I hope that you will carefully consider these issues as you move forward with the North Paramount Gateway specific plan. And this is from Jose Ariola, 7810 Howe Street. And then, John's response is, "Jose, thank you for your comments to the Planning Commission. Please note that there will be a Planning Commission meeting today at 6:00 PM, but the discussion regarding the North Paramount Gateway specific plan will be postponed to the July 5 meeting. Hopefully, you can attend that meeting, which will also be at 6:00 PM." I'll work on answering all of your questions. I'll work on answering all of your questions. And John gives some contact information. And then John states, "The main thing is the rezoning will allow for more housing and up to 30 units per acre in most parts of the plan area, which is up from the 22 units per acre, to bring Paramount into compliance with the state of California." I see 7810 Howe is in this area where the density could rise. Looking at an overhead photo of your neighborhood, I really don't see many properties that have space for more homes, but we could always review proposals as they come in, let those property owners know what can and cannot be done. Another change with the plan, another change with the plan, it will allow limited mixed-use housing along Paramount Boulevard between Rose Crowns and the freeway and along the north side of Rose Crowns between Paramount and Anderson. We see incremental change over the next 40 years. The city does not want to see residents displaced, so you will see more support for the property owners of warehouses, car wash, and repair shop to change to mixed-use housing. You are right about added services and impacts on the neighborhood that possible new housing or businesses could bring, so the plan does include requirements to prevent, provide those concerns. Regarding sustainability, one big requirement is new buildings would have to go above and beyond the state-required energy requirements by at least 5% more energy efficiency. Plus, water use will have to go up 30% beyond the standard water demand for new developments." And then John just gives us contact information. And then finally, this one we received today. "And dear Planning Commission, I support the increase in housing density and the inclusion of the mixed-use development in future zoning at 8029 to 8041 and 1/2 North Rose Crowns Avenue in Paramount on tonight's agenda to help the city meet future housing quotas." And this is from John Paul Dreher, and he's the manager of those properties. Okay, and then we do have one that we, I'm sorry, one final one, that we received on June 26. This is from Blanca Mercado. I'm sorry, that's for another item this evening. That concludes for all the comments for this item.
I just wanted to add that the longest email had the longest answer and referenced that I would write back with a follow-up, with a more, with a longer answer. And I do have a very extensive follow-up email. I don't think you need to hear that unless you want to, but I, just to point out for the record that I did follow up with an even more extensive answer.
A lot of those questions, or some of them anyway, these things are so far down the line that it's hard to answer, I would imagine. For example, is it gonna, is it going to alter the bus stop schedule?
It could. It hopefully will, would increase with more if there were people moving in, but that would be determined, would be determined in the future, most definitely.
Yeah, but that would be dependent on if the building, if the high-density housing gets built.
That's right.
And if it's filled out and if there are more buses are required.
Right.
Bus stops.
Yes.
It's hard to have a crystal ball.
It is, at this point, right.
All right, any other questions here for, from our group? Okay, then we're gonna need a motion to close the public hearings.
May I make my comment?
Oh, I'm sorry, yes.
Yeah, I just wanna address the concern for Mr. T.
I talked with John Carver today on the phone, on a personal call, about some of these issues. And I've come to realize that in order to, to have a, have, you know, really good plans, you have to do planning, you know? And if you fail to plan, you plan to fail. My dad taught me that when I was a kid. And I use that with my students in teaching. And all of these plans, they sound really great. And how many of them are actually gonna come to fruition, it's hard to tell because we don't have a crystal ball, you know? But when the time comes and, and changes want to be made, if we don't have the basic framework and ground rules in place, then nothing's gonna happen. And I think about this area down here, well, it's, it's over here, all the revitalization that happened in the, well, I guess, late eighties, early nineties, you know? We've got these shopping centers and the nice trees and the benches. People in the position of power in those days had to make some tough choices and maybe didn't have a full vision of what it was gonna be. But they listened to their advisors and they made an informed decision based on the information they had, not really knowing exactly what it was gonna look like. And I would imagine that even though we have this, this rough draft with this, there's probably gonna be a lot of changes. And we see that in our, in everywhere. Our governor has said in 2035, they're gonna stop selling gas cars. And I, I got, you know, I, I got some money to say that's probably gonna be changed by the time 2035 rolls around. And that may be the case with this. So we have these ideas of, you know, all your concerns that you guys spoke. You know, this high-density stuff and what type of people is that gonna bring? And, you know, we lay awake at night thinking about that. And when it, when it actually comes down to it, it, it may happen and it may not. These plans might change. After we're through from these positions of leadership and the city council changes, maybe they'll make changes that undo all this. But I still believe that if there's not a basic framework in place, then we don't have a place to start.
Right, because the state wants it.
Because the state, yeah. And I don't like the idea of the state having to come in and saying that this is what you're gonna do in your city, whether you like it or not. And I, I don't like these ideas of the state mandates and the regionally forecasted, you know, a lot of these buzzwords. I don't like the idea of, of vehicle miles traveled, we wanna lower that, and we're concerned with sustainable and renewable transportation, which translates into walking and riding bicycles. Like the lady said, we're not, you know, that's, that's not gonna happen around here.
Because they work. We come, we work, you gotta come home.
Yeah, that's right. You gotta come home and get, get your groceries and get ready for the next day and eat and go to bed. So it's a tough spot to be in, having to make these calls. And like I said, I think we just have to, you know, pray about it, listen to our advisors, look at the information we have, and make the best decision possible that we can.
Sure. I totally agree. I agree with a lot of the parents that we go through. The fact is, is that we're, I mean, we put it together, it's not just a, it's a long work. So I really think that we've done a lot of the work that we're doing. The project is, 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 so, it is maybe easier to do, to go through, than you know, than you have to. And even though, but you said, it may not, but we hope it does in some aspects of, um, in some areas.
This is really John King's projects. I have to put a lot of that on John having done such a wonderful job.
So thank you. Good job, John.
Two Johns.
Two Johns. And, you know, I'll just say, I'll say one last thing, that, that John's the one that put this together. And at the very beginning, he said that this was a 30, 40, or maybe even 50-year plan. You know, and I'm probably not gonna be here in 30 years.
I will be here.
So, so, well, yeah, but you never know, the way things, the way things, the wheels turn, the wheels of progress, you know, regulations and all this stuff, so.
Just like the gentleman over there said about the donuts that they're doing now in every neighborhood, we are working on that very strongly, let me tell you. I went to a meeting, special meetings, and they are doing that. And you'll see, hopefully, some changes on that throughout the city.
John, haven't there been some, some cars that were impounded because of that?
It was John King, yeah, John King.
Yeah, I can address that, Mr. Chair. Actually, I'd like to address a couple of things that the commission has brought up and also the residents. One of the, one of the difficulties with a plan like this is, and I, and I think John King has brought this up, is that the, the, many of the dictates in this plan are not necessarily have been initiated by the city. They are regulations that are being mandated by the state, by the state legislation. So the state legislators have taken upon themselves to basically warrant that there's not enough high-density housing in California. So what's happening is that there's a certain degree of autonomy that cities used to have that's being kind of being restricted now, if you will. A long time ago, you know, local control was, was a major reason to become a city. And, you know, there used to be charter cities and then there used to be general law cities. Well, there still are, but the general law cities and cities generally, I mean, they are just creatures of statute. So the state creates them. And so with that, the state is mandating more and more legislation upon cities to say, this is what you have to do, especially in areas of housing. So it's not like the cities can say, no, we don't wanna do that because maybe the city of Paramount doesn't have the geographical dimensions or boundaries to accommodate that. State doesn't usually care about that. That's one of the biggest arguments that I think cities are making, is that you cannot necessarily have a global mandate that applies to every city because every city can be different. But that's not the case. And so what's happening is that the cities, all of us are, and you are, are required to look at this and say, okay, we have to have this implemented, but there are gonna be side effects. One of the big side effects of, of housing and high-density is parking. City of Paramount has a very, very unique parking issue because there just isn't that much parking. And we get that all the time. So we have to deal with kind of the side effects, if you will. And so even though the city may say, hey, we don't think that should be applied to it, we, we have to because the state mandated, but then the city has to then, is responsible for the side effects of it, like we are. So that is one of the things that you're dealing with. And a plan like this is something that requires a lot of creativity. And you can see the staff is trying to do it in increments and be able to lessen the impacts as much as possible so that you, you still have some control. That's what I wanted to talk about, that. The other issue that Commissioner Sparza was talking about is that, is a street racing issue here. I can say this, is that I know that there, we get complaints a lot, but I can tell you this, is that several years ago, the city council adopted a very, very stringent street racing ordinances. We had two of them, which our office drafted and presented, and the city council saw the vision of it and said, we need to do something about it. Because street racing doesn't impact just Paramount, it impacts every city in California, as you can see. And so those two ordinance, in coordination with the sheriff's department, even with the highway patrol, and our public safety department, we have been very, actually very successful in getting most of, a lot of these cars off the streets. We have a impoundment program, we have a forfeiture program. And so what happens is that when these racers come onboard, and again, these are not just kids that just happen to be in Paramount, most of them are not even from Paramount, believe it or not. But there is a very, very sophisticated communication system on the internet where these clubs basically say, hey, we're gonna meet over here or this date. They're planned out way in advance. Public safety, the sheriff's department is, is basically just trying to anticipate when they're gonna be. We're not always successful about it, but we do. And, but when they do come, we're there to basically track those cars down, get not only the, the drivers of the cars, but also participants and spectators. And we have seen a, actually a decrease in the amount of that activity compared to was before we had the ordinance. In my office, what we do is that we have, I think, a very successful program of either forfeiture or we enter into a, like a stipulated judgment with the individuals who say, we'll say, okay, you can have your car back, but if you're caught again, not only in Paramount, but anyplace else with the car doing that, then you have basically signed off the right for us to take your car away without any additional hearing. And we have about 17 or 18 of those. And what's very, very successful with that program is that we have not had one repeat offender based on that. So we're getting, we can't stop this from happening. And that was never the intent because I don't think you can just stop it, especially when you have a culture out there, even in the entertainment industry that promotes it, okay? So the best we can do is, and Paramount has been kind of the pioneer, I can't tell you how many other cities have contacted us to say, can you get us copies of your ordinance? We wanna do the same thing. And I think the council's vision was to say, okay, we're gonna be the pioneers, but we're gonna hope that these other cities do something similar so that, if you will, the net gets wider and wider, okay? To where they won't have a whole lot of places to go to because if all the other cities are doing it, then it's gonna cut that off. That's number one. Number two, we, we, I think we all anticipated if we can do something like this and it's successful, we can then get some action from Sacramento to adopt a state regulation that kind of mirrors what we were doing. So then it becomes a state statute, okay? And third, what we have done, and it has, it's not entirely successful, but we made a couple inroads with General Motors where we have tried to communicate with them that says, look, if you're gonna be financing a car, okay? Someone signs all those financing agreements. We all know when you buy a car, you're there for about an hour, filling out document after document. Well, one of the things that we have asked them to do is to put language in those finance agreements that if their car that they either sell is involved in a legal street racing, that the manufacturer or the finance company has the right to take the car. Because that would be a contractual violation, okay? Rather than something that the city does. So we're creating a partnership with a lot of different entities and a lot of companies, and we're combating that. So I wanted you to know and let the public know that this is something that is aggressively being utilized in Paramount. And I think it is working because we are seeing a lot of activity in other cities and it's decreasing here in Paramount. We're not saying it's eliminated, and we don't think it'll be eliminated, but we wanna let people know that if you come into Paramount and you get caught, you may lose your car. That's what we're doing.
Thank you. That's sobering. That's interesting, yeah. Thank you for that explanation. I, it's good for all of our participants to hear. Okay, any other comments here? No? Okay, then we're gonna need a motion to, John, as long as there's no other comments, we'll close the public hearing portion of this meeting. We need a motion to do that.
I'll second it.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded. Hold call, please.
Commissioner Gonzalez, Commissioner Mooney, Commissioner Timmons, Vice Chair Sparza, Chair Weisenberger.
Yes. Okay, so we're still on this, this item here, item number two, but it's gonna come in four different parts.
That's interesting, yeah. Thank you for that explanation. I, it's good for all of our participants to hear. Okay, any other comments here? No? Okay, then we're going to need a motion to, John, as long as there's no other comments, we'll close the public hearing portion of this meeting. We need a motion to do that.
I'll second it.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Gonzalez, Commissioner Moody, Commissioner Timmons, Vice Chair Sparza, Chair Weisenberger.
Yes. Okay, so we're still on this, this item here, item number two, but it's going to come in four different parts, A, B, C, and D, just like it was outlined in the presentation. And so we need to consider each one separately. So this first one here, which I, which is part A, excuse me, the environmental impact report. And so we need a motion to read by title and adopt planning commission resolution 23020, recommending that the city council certify the final environmental impact report and approve mitigation, monitoring, and reporting program, and adopt the statement of overriding considerations associated with the general plan, amendment number 22-2, zone change number 240, and zone ordinance text amendment number 25 for the North Paramount Gateway specific project. Okay, so if we want this to proceed, then we need to have a motion to approve. Okay, it's been moved and seconded. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Gonzalez, Commissioner Moody, Commissioner Timmons, Vice Chair Sparza, Chair Weisenberger.
Yes. Okay, let's move to part B. This is the general plan amendment number 22-2, and the motion in order is to adopt planning commission resolution 23012, recommending that the city council approve a request to replace the Clearwater North and the Howe or Azaba specific plans with the North Paramount Gateway specific plan, and extend the specific plan area to include all of Paramount Boulevard properties south of the Century Freeway, north of Rosecrans Avenue, to the Metro Pacific Electric Railway right-of-way, and other properties designated commercial or multifamily residential between the two existing specific plan areas in the city of Paramount. Okay, so we need a motion to approve. That's the pleasure of this.
I'll second it.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Gonzalez, Commissioner Moody, Commissioner Timmons, Vice Chair Sparza, Chair Weisenberger.
Yes. Okay, part C. This is zone change number 240. We need to entertain a motion to adopt planning commission resolution 23013, recommending that the city council approve zone change number 240, a request to change the official zoning map from Clearwater North and Howe or Azaba to the North Paramount Gateway specific plan, and change the zone of the extended area between the two existing plans, the plan areas, from the C3, which is general commercial, CM, which is commercial manufacturing, and the PDPS, Plan Development with Performance Standards. Want to change that to the North Paramount Gateway specific plan in the city of Paramount. It's been moved and seconded. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Gonzalez, Commissioner Moody, Commissioner Timmons, Vice Chair Sparza, Chair Weisenberger.
Yes. Okay, part D. This is zoning ordinance text amendment number 25. The motion in order is to adopt planning commission resolution 23014, recommending that the city council approve zoning ordinance text amendment number 25, a request to repeal and replace chapter 17.84 of the Paramount Municipal Code in its entirety, to incorporate the North Paramount Gateway specific plan into the Paramount Municipal Code. Motion to approve. We need a motion and a second to approve.
I'll second it.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Gonzalez, Commissioner Moody, Commissioner Timmons, Vice Chair Sparza, Chair Weisenberger.
Yes. Now we go to our new business. Okay, these are public hearings, agenda item number three, conditional use permit number 936. Excuse me. This is a request by Rafael Gilcetarian and the Gilcetarian Accountancy for Charlie's Cheese Steaks to operate a restaurant with indoor seating within the Walmart building at 14501 Lakewood Boulevard in the C3 zone. This project is a Class 1 categorical exemption pursuant to Article 19, Section 15, 301 of the SEQA guidelines. Do you have a staff report?
Yes, Mr. Chairman and members of the commission. So this is inside the Walmart, and this used to be the location of McDonald's, which had been there for many, many years and had closed down recently. And Ivan Reyes will give you more detail on this project.
Thank you, John. Good evening, Honorable Chair, members of the commission. So this project is a request to operate a restaurant with indoor seating. It's located at 14501 Lakewood Boulevard in the C3 general commercial zone. This space is a 1,790 square foot tenant space within Walmart. To the right, you see Charlie's, so that's the menu. They sell a variety of things, such as, you know, the main thing is cheesesteaks. They also do catering and a variety of drinks and sides. So yeah, just to give you some background, business license records indicate that McDonald's maintained an active business license until December of 2020. The use was discontinued after six months of inactivity. And the purpose of this hearing is to consider the restaurant with indoor seating, establish new conditions to comply with city regulations, and bring the business into conformance with the zoning regulations. So just to give you an idea, it's located, and the property is located within the Paramount Place Retail Shopping Center, so that's on the west side of Lakewood Boulevard, near the border of Paramount and Downey City boundary. The 11-acre site is developed with a 141,000 square foot Walmart and several other retail stores. And then here's the location of Charlie's, where it would be located within the building of Walmart. This is a close-up of the proposed floor plan. There are tenant improvements that will be made to the kitchen, and if approved, plans will be, will need to be submitted to the Building and Safety Division for permits. So they have a counter, they have a dining area, and a kitchen towards the back. Charlie's is a national fast food restaurant. They have over nine restaurants here in the LA area alone. The business hours, their hours of operation are Monday through Sunday from 10:00 a.m. to 11:00 p.m., and those are the same hours as the Walmart. They will have four employees, and no ampersand live music will be, will be played here. So here's the photos of the existing conditions. On the left-hand side, you have the outside of Walmart. On the right-hand side, you have the former McDonald's that has been closed off for these past couple of years. So if they do do the tenant improvements, it will all be connected within that area. So for the analysis, the proposed restaurant is located in an appropriate zone. It's compatible with the surrounding businesses, and there is sufficient parking that will be provided. So with that, we're recommending to adopt resolution number PC 23021, approving conditional use permit number 936. This concludes my presentation. I'm happy to answer any questions.
Can I make a comment? I've been waiting for this to open. I had this in Philadelphia, and I haven't had it since, and I'm excited about that, so.
Good, huh?
Yes, yes. Very good, very good. It's actually Charlie's Philly Steak, something like that. Anyway, good. Yeah, it's good.
Okay, any other comments here? Okay, let's open the public hearing portion of this meeting. John, we have any testimony tonight?
This is the one where I do have one email, comment. It's from Blanca Mercado. "I think this is a great idea to have a new area to eat and rest during our shopping time. I just want to ask you to keep it clean and attractive for customers, hygienic, and good customer service."
Well, then let's, we need a motion to close the public hearing portion of this agenda item.
I'll second it.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Gonzalez.
Yes.
Commissioner Moody, Commissioner Timmons.
Yes.
Vice Chair Sparza, Chair Weisenberger.
Yes. Okay, then we need to entertain a motion to adopt this planning commission resolution 23021, and for approval of the Charlie's Cheesecakes to operate within the Walmart.
I will definitely.
Got a second, a third, and it sounds like a fourth. Okay, roll call, please.
Commissioner Gonzalez.
Yes.
Commissioner Moody, Commissioner Timmons.
Yes.
Vice Chair Sparza, Chair Weisenberger.
Yes. Okay, agenda item number four, conditional use permit number 940. Excuse me. This is a request by John Jacobson Caldera LLC to operate a machine shop with two computer numerical control machines for the manufacturing and assembling of downhole logging tools for the geothermal industry at 16243 Minnesota Avenue in the M2 zone. This project is a Class 1 categorical exemption pursuant to Article 19, 15301, and Class 32 categorical exemptions with the SEQA guidelines.
Yes, Mr. Chair and commissioners, our associate planner Ivan Reyes will go over this item also with you.
Thank you, John. So yeah, this is a request to operate a machine shop with two computer numerical control or CNC machines for manufacturing and assembling of downhole logging tools for the geothermal industry located at 16243 Minnesota Avenue. It's in the M2 heavy manufacturing zone. So Caldera will be occupying 800 square feet within a 3,750 square foot building. The applicant subleases from Certik Manufacturing. The lot size is 7,505 square feet. So here's a satellite view of the property, east of Minnesota Avenue. The yellow boundary shows the property, and then the hash area shows where Caldera will be located. So that's towards the front of the building. So here's some existing photos. On the left-hand side, you have the front of the building, the existing conditions. On the right-hand side, you have the back of the, the rear of the property adjacent to an alleyway that's there right now. So here's a close-up of the floor plan. The applicant proposes to install storage racks to hold the manufactured parts and purchased parts for inventory. All work will be conducted onsite within the existing building, which also houses a 100 square foot office area, and this, within inside, will be the CNC machine as well. So Caldera manufactures geothermal logging tools designed to continuously measure pressure, temperature, internal diameter, and flow data in high-temperature geothermal wells. Their hours of operation are Monday to Friday from 7:00 a.m. to 4:30 p.m., and they will have a total of seven employees. So here's a close-up of pretty much what the materials and the tools that they're assembling and producing here. So on the left-hand side, you have a PTS XY caliper logging tool. So it measures 125 inches in height. It's about 80 pounds. On the right-hand side, you have another variation of this. This is a PTS Max logging tool, so it's 69 inches in height, weighs 65 pounds, and they're both battery-powered with three AA batteries. So environmental analysis, as part of this project, an environmental analysis was conducted by a planning and environmental services consultant, elevated entitlements, in accordance with the California Environmental Quality Act or SEQA, and SEQA guidelines. The consultant focused on the potential impacts the proposed CNC machine could have on air quality as related to the SEQA checklist. In summary, there are no new sources of emissions. The air quality analysis conservatively included operational emissions associated with manufacturing land use. Emission sources include area sources, such as architectural coatings, consumer products, and landscaping, and energy sources, such as natural gas combustion. Furthermore, the emissions from area and energy sources are based on the size of the Caldera proposes installing two high-tech 200A series CNC lathe machine, which provides rigid and stable, heavy-duty cutting while maintaining high precision. Additionally, the high-tech 200A features the following: high-power spindle, high-precision machine bed, turret indexing time, rapid feed, and a turnmill. So as part of the SEQA, the analysis determined that the project is categorically exempt from Class 1, that's existing facilities, pursuant to Article 19 and Section 15301, and Class 32, which is the infill development of the SEQA guidelines. In addition, per Southern California Air Quality Management District Rule 219, the project is exempt from permit requirements for the machinery. Therefore, the operations will result in a less-than-significant impact. So for the analysis, the proposed business is located in an appropriate manufacturing zone. It is compatible with the surrounding businesses, and the operations would not result, would result in a less-than-significant impact. So with that, it's recommended to adopt resolution number PC 23022, approving conditional use permit number 940. This concludes my presentation. I'm happy to answer any questions.
I don't know if you know this, if you know, where is this tool's used for? Where are they used there?
That's a good question.
It's pretty high-tech.
Yeah, and I noticed that the assembly of these tools were pretty small to, compared to where they are. I did look up some info of what geothermal wells are, and they're basically just another way of, like, oil, oil wells, or oil type of, I guess, renewable, like, sources for energy, that they just do a lot of tests on. I was not too familiar with this myself. I'm not sure if, I don't think they showed up here today, but yeah, they would have done a better job explaining that.
That's pretty interesting.
And they only use a double-A battery?
Yeah, that was, yeah.
One of them is 65 pounds, and it requires only double-A battery.
Yeah.
Three double-A batteries.
That was the specifications on the.
My radio.
Yeah.
Ivan, how does a project get exempt from the SEQA requirements? If they're existing facilities, is that how it works?
Right, so depending on their scope of work and what they're doing, a lot of it, if there's no significant impact to what they're doing, it gets certain categories. So that was, it actually has two, two class exemptions, which is not really common for a machine shop, so they're exempt from, from a lot of the guidelines.
Thank you. Any other comments? All right, let's open the public hearing portion. John, have we got any testimony?
Nothing in favor or opposed.
Okay, nothing tonight, so we need a motion to close the public hearing portion.
Move to close.
Been moved and seconded, thank you. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Gonzalez.
Yes.
Commissioner Moody, Commissioner Timmons.
Yes.
Vice Chair Sparza.
Yes.
Chair Weisenberger.
Yes. Okay, so now we need to entertain a motion to adopt planning commission resolution 23022, which is a request to operate this machine shop with two computer numerical control machines for the manufacturing and assembling of downhole logging tools for geothermal industry.
Timmons, so moved.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Gonzalez.
Yes.
Commissioner Moody, Commissioner Timmons.
Yes.
Vice Chair Sparza, Chair Weisenberger.
Yes. Okay, moving on, agenda item number five, conditional use permit number 941. This is a request by Fernando Nava/Global Imports Unlimited to operate a wholesale and online sales business with a showroom for the import and sales of general automotive parts, shop tools, and accessories at 14905 Paramount Boulevard, Suite G, in the Clearwater East specific plan area. This project is a Class 1 categorical exemption pursuant to Article 19 of the SEQA guidelines. So staff report?
Yes, Mr. Chair and members of the commission. Our planning intern, Serna Caravale, will give you the. give you the details on this project.
Hey, thank you, Chair and Commissioners. This is CUP Number 941. The applicant is requesting to operate a wholesale and online sales business with a showroom for the import and sales of general automotive parts, shop tools, accessories at 14904 Paramount Boulevard in the Suite G. And this is for Global Imports Unlimited. I forgot to state that. This property is in the Clearwater East Specific Plan Zone, which allows for this type of use. The suite is about 2,800 square feet, which will have about three employees working at that suite, and it'll operate Monday through Friday from 8:00 to 5:00 p.m., and Saturdays from 8:00 to 1:00. So for a bit of background, Global Imports Unlimited is an auto part and accessory e-commerce business. Here are some of the type of products that they sell. As you can see, they have a variety of car lifts of different kinds. They have two-post, four-posts, and single-column lifts, and tools for hobbyist and mechanic shops. Here's an aerial view of the subject site. The yellow box indicates the 2,800-square-foot Suite G at 14905 Paramount Boulevard. The business operates primarily by appointments, but they'll have flexibility for walk-in clients. The warehouse area will serve as the storage and sorting area, and the inventory will be delivered to the warehouse using the loading door located on the south side of the suite. The showroom floor will be used to showcase the products to the clients that will be coming in, and there's going to be an employee station to assist any potential clients who enter the property. There are no commercial vehicles associated with this business. There will be about two to four outbound pickups per week for clients, and inbound deliveries occur once a month via a freight forwarding delivery company. Here's a site plan of the subject property. The red indicates the outline of the 2,800-square-foot suite, and the green indicates the loading door on the south side of the property. The blue indicates one additional ADA parking space on the south side of the project site to comply with ADA standards. Here's a proposed floor plan of the site. You'll see here the showroom on the right and the storage on the left, which would be for the warehousing. Here are some images of the project site. As you can see here, the landscaping looks upkept. However, the loading door and the suite exterior could use some work, so we added a condition of approval to refurbish them and remove any blemishes that might appear here. The proposed business is located in an appropriate zone. All operations and storage will be located indoors. The suite will be maintained and clean at all times, and then, as I mentioned, we added some conditions of approval to refurbish the exterior and the loading door of the property. The hours would be limited from 8:00 a.m. to 5:00 p.m., Monday through Friday, and Saturdays from 8:00 to 1:00 p.m. And with that, we recommend approval of Conditional Use Permit 941. And yeah, let me know if you guys have any questions.
Questions?
Any questions?
I do. I have one question.
Yeah.
I'd like to ask, I know it said that it's a wholesale business, but are they also allowing sales to regular people?
Yeah, it's to walk-in clients, but it's not as busy. It's just a few people that might come in, and there's going to be an employee there stationed, you know, to help out with potential clients that come in.
Anything else? Okay, let's open the public hearing portion of this item here. Have we got any testimony tonight, John?
No speaker cards.
Okay, no speaker cards, so we need a motion to close the public hearing portion? Been moved and seconded, roll call, please.
Commissioner Gonzalez.
Yes.
Commissioner Moody. Commissioner Timmons.
Yes.
Vice Chair Sparza. Chair Weisenberger.
Yes. Okay, so let's entertain a motion then to adopt Planning Commission Resolution 23023, which is a request to operate the wholesale and online business with a showroom for import, sales of automotive parts.
I'll make a motion.
Motion? Okay, been moved and seconded, roll call, please.
Commissioner Gonzalez.
Yes.
Commissioner Moody. Commissioner Timmons.
Yes.
Vice Chair Sparza. Chair Weisenberger.
Yes. Okay, Agenda Item Number Six is a Zone Variance Number 14, and it is being requested to open and continue the public hearing portion of this to our August 2 meeting. So we need a motion to open the public hearing portion and then continue this to our August meeting.
Timmons, so moved.
Been moved and seconded.
Commissioner Gonzalez.
Yes.
Commissioner Moody. Commissioner Timmons.
Yes.
Vice Chair Sparza. Chair Weisenberger.
Yes. Okay, Item Number Seven, Zone Change Number 246. This is a recommendation that the City Council change the official zoning map from R2 to PDPS at 16305 Huntsaker Avenue to allow the disposition of the property to a nonprofit affordable housing developer and the subdivision of the property into parcels for the construction of one single-family home on each resulting property for the future sale to income-qualifying households. This project is a Class 32 Categorical Exemption pursuant to Article 19, Section 15332 of the CEQA Guidelines.
Yes, Mr. Chair and members of the Commission, this is a property that the city purchased with affordable housing funds from the former redevelopment agency, and as the Chair noted in his description, that this will be for two affordable homes. So we're doing the zone change part of it right now. We'll be bringing a track map back to you to split this into two parcels in the future, and then, from there on, Habitat for Humanity, we're working with Habitat for Humanity to construct two affordable homes. And so our management analyst, Sol Bejirano, and Smerna Caravell wrote the report, and Smerna's going to give you the presentation.
Thank you. So like we mentioned, this is Zone Change 246. The request is to make a zone change for the property located at 16305 Huntsaker Avenue from an R2 medium-density residential to PDPS, planned development with performance standards, single-family residential. This would allow the disposition of the property to a nonprofit affordable housing developer pending City Council approval. Eventually, the project will include the subdivision of the property into two separate parcels, which would consist of one single-family home on each lot, and that would be for the future sale of income-qualifying households. Keeping the R2 zoning would only allow for rental opportunities. However, the city is committed to creating more affordable homeownership opportunities for low-to-moderate-income families. By rezoning, two families would be able to benefit from this project and build an accessible path to create wealth for generations to come. Pending City Council approval, the project will be developed by Habitat for Humanity of the Greater Los Angeles, which is a nonprofit organization that works with families and local communities so that more people can live in affordable and safe homes. Both of these lots will be accessed from the public street, and they'll have an easement for a shared driveway approach leading to each unit's two-car garage. Here's an aerial view of the site. The property is approximately 7,800 square feet in size. The City of Paramount acquired this site from its original property owner back in 2019. The property consists of two detached, single-family homes, which are in poor condition, and then they're pretty dilapidated, as you can see here on the left on the image here. This map shows the existing zoning for the property at 16305 Huntsaker Avenue, which is currently R2 medium-density residential. This map shows the proposed zoning for the property, which would be PDPS, planned development with performance standards. As for the general planned land use designation, the zoning would stay consistent as a multiple-family residential. Here's the proposed site plan. As you can see, the lot would be split into two parcels, as shown in green and blue. The green indicates Lot 1, which would be about 3,300 square feet, and Lot 2 in blue, which would be approximately 4,310 square feet. You can see here the driveway, which would be an easement for the access of both garages right there. The zone change would be consistent with the general planned land use designation of multiple-family residential. The project will not be out of character for the surrounding zoning, and it also matches the surrounding neighborhood of varying residential densities. And with all of this in mind, the Planning Department recommends adopting Resolution Number 23024 to recommend the City Council to approve the ordinance for Zone Change Number 246. I'm happy to answer any questions that you all may have.
Thank you. Any questions, panel? Okay, then let's open the public hearing portion. John, any testimony?
No, sir.
No testimony for or against, so we need a motion to close the public hearing. Been moved and seconded, roll call, please.
Commissioner Gonzalez.
Yes.
Commissioner Moody. Commissioner Timmons.
Yes.
Vice Chair Sparza. Chair Weisenberger.
Yes. Okay, then let's move to a motion then to adopt this resolution, Number 23024, recommending that the City Council, recommending to the City Council to change the official zoning from R2 to PDPS with the performance standards at 16305 Huntsaker Avenue, and then to divide the property into two units for housing.
Timmons?
Moved? Moved and seconded, roll call, please.
Commissioner Gonzalez.
Yes.
Commissioner Moody. Commissioner Timmons.
Yes.
Vice Chair Sparza. Chair Weisenberger.
Yes.
Do you have any questions? The city bought the property, you're tearing down, you're building two houses.
That's correct. So we're going to be giving, most likely, giving the property to Habitat for Humanity. They'll sell them, both houses at an affordable cost, and then they take the money and they use it for projects that they do elsewhere.
Is the city allowed to flip houses?
Yes.
I know this isn't the case, but I was...
Well, no, we're not flipping it.
No, I didn't think so.
We have, though. We have.
Have you?
We have dilapidated homes. It's been a long time, and we've had a developer remodel them for us, and then we've sold them at an affordable cost. That was probably 20 years ago that we did a couple of those projects.
Because I read that, I read that they had a number of violations, and, you know, it's all run down, and people just don't want to do anything with it.
Yes.
So the city came in and made them an offer, and they said, okay?
It was actually, it was actually for sale, and, uh-huh, yep, so we purchased it while it was for sale. Right.
Yeah, yeah, pretty good.
But Habitat for Humanity is a very good program. They really help individuals, low-income, and they work all over the country, so they're really good.
I've been to their warehouse over there. It used to have one on Artesia.
Artesia. But with the Red Cross, I worked with them, and they really help people, so they do good things.
Any other comments on this topic here? Okay, Agenda Item Number Eight then, Oral Report, City Council Actions.
Nothing to report.
Nothing to report. Agenda Item Number Nine, Comments, anything from our city attorney?
No additional comments, Mr. Chair. I think I've spoken enough.
Well, thank you for your, your stuff was very interesting.
Okay.
Well-timed, and I know this gentleman, I saw him, after you gave your presentation, he goes, yeah, you know, when you see that...
We have a pretty successful program. It's amazing how many other cities are asking about it, so it's nice to know that the City of Paramount, through the council, have been such a pioneer on this.
Yes.
We even have the California Highway Patrol telling other cities to do the same thing. So it's nice to hear.
Can I ask one question, though? So what happens with the cars? Say, for instance, if somebody has a contract, you take the car, who pays the rest of the bill?
And those are good questions. What, the way we have this set up is, if there is a car that has a lien holder, like, for instance, like, let's say GMAC is the financing authority, of course, we let them know that we're going to be doing this, and then they have the option of, what they'll do is, they may contact us because they have money into this car already, all right? And of course, the people are paying them back, but what we tell them is that, look, if you don't do anything about this, we're going to be forfeiting the car, and then it's going to be sold at an auction. And part of our ordinance, basically, also, our ordinance is that either the lien holder or the registered driver can purchase the car again. So it's got to be to a third party. We don't want to go back to the same people.
You're right.
Okay? So what happens is that a lot of times, the lien holder will sit there and say, okay, can you give the car back to us? And what I do, what we do, is that, okay, we'll make you a deal, we'll let you have the car, but you have to sign this agreement, okay? And part of the agreement is, they have to pay all the impound charges, they have to pay any legal fees that were involved in it, they have to pay the public safety fees, and what we're trying to do also is to try to calculate what the fees would be for any damage to the intersection, which they would have to pay as well. Once that does, then they will take their car back, and then what they'll do is that then they'll sell it to somebody else, but not to the other person, and then try to recoup whatever money they lost. But if they don't do it at all, and we do go through the auction, they only get what their interest is after the city sells the car.
So the person who actually owned the car pretty much is relieved of the balance of the lien on the car, or the costs?
Well, that is not necessarily true, because what happens is that the finance company may say, you're still on the hook.
Okay, that's what I wanted to hear.
Okay?
That sounds good.
If there is a difference in the amount that they sell the car for, let's say it's $10,000, and then they sell the car for like $5,000, and there's still $5,000 left, they'll probably go after the owner, the car person before, and say, you owe us $5,000 based on the contract. So it, that's why, yeah, and that's why what we try to do, Commissioner Timmons, is that we're trying to get a lot of these automobile industry on board, have their contracts, so that, look, you can just take the car back as a breach, and that way, it's done right away, and they get their car, they keep their investment, and then they can resell it through. But you know, it's, dealing with car manufacturers is even worse than sometimes government, because there's a lot of obstacles to go through. Well, it's one of these things that we're doing, and getting a partnership with everybody. Doesn't help when you have, like, the 20th sequel to Fast and Furious.
Right. I'm glad to hear, too, that the city is adding up the damage it's done, and instead of having the taxpayers pay the bills, they charge it to the people that should be paying it.
Part of the deterrent, too, is trying to do that. What we're going to do as well is, we're probably going to be coming back and adding in the costs that the Sheriff's Department charges the city for. For, let's say, say there is an incident, and the sheriff's, the task force has to go out, well, that's their time that they bill the city for to do that, and we want to try to see if we can recoup that time as well.
I like it.
That's what I wanted to hear.
Very good. Thank you. Okay, any comments from our Commissioners? Okay, how about our staff?
No, sir.
No comments. Okay, in that case, we're going to adjourn this meeting until August 2 at 6:00 p.m.
That's all right. Okay, we're going to open the Development Review Board. Okay, we're going to open the Development Review Board. Can we have roll call, please?
Board Member Sparza? Board Member Gonzalez?
Here.
Board Member Weisenberger?
Here.
Vice Chair Moody? Chair Timmons?
Here.
And also, can we have approval of the minutes for the last meeting of June 7?
Moved to move.
Been moved and seconded, can we have roll call, please?
Board Member Sparza? Board Member Gonzalez?
Yes.
Board Member Weisenberger?
Yes.
Vice Chair Moody? Chair Timmons?
Yes.
Okay, do we have any public comments?
No public comments.
Thank you. For new business?
No, no, no new business.
Any comments? From Commissioners? Any comments from staff? I like this. Oh.
What about the museum? You bought the building?
So the developer is in escrow. There were a couple of things that came up on title today, actually, that we're going to take care of tomorrow, so it should be closing escrow, if not by the end of this week, then next week.
You're not getting the whole building, are you?
No, we're going to get maybe a third of it, and the rest will be for the food hall.
Any other comments? Okay, move to adjourn the next meeting of August 2, 2023. Easy meeting.
I thought we ordered the Paramount Economic Development Board meeting of July 5, 2023. We have roll call, please.
Board Member Sparza? Board Member Timmons?
Yes.
Board Member Weisenberger?
Here.
Vice Chair Moody? Chair Gonzalez?
Here. All right, first item, approval of minutes of our meeting of June 7, 2023. We have a motion?
Second.
It's been a motion and second. We have a roll call, please.
Board Member Sparza?
Yes.
Board Member Timmons?
Yes.
Board Member Weisenberger?
Yes.
Vice Chair Moody? Chair Gonzalez?
Yes.
Do we have any public comments?
No public comments.
New business, any oral reports?
Yes, John King.
Just a little micro report. It's been a long evening. We do have on the agenda Clearwater East specific plan, so I just wanted to just let you know that this is, this is beginning, this is in its infancy. So you just reviewed the Clearwater, well, the replacing the Clearwater North specific plan with the North Paramount Gateway specific plan. Also, in the 1980s, there was the Clearwater East specific plan that is still in the books, as you saw from Planner Smyrna Caravell's report. That's the area around the, the station. It also includes the SWAT meet, which is, you know, very large open property, and other very important properties, as you say, in interest. There's, there's the church, there's a shopping center, there's Jack in the Box, there's a few others. So the City Council, very recently, they approved a contract with another planning for a private planning firm to help us out with this plan area. This has long been talked about. So for this, the state is also requiring an increase in the housing. So right now, housing is, believe it or not, housing is allowed there, and there is housing, the nuns live there. So housing is allowed up to 22 units per acre. The state's saying we have to increase that to 30 units per acre, and with the other opportunities, this will be kind of a two-year plan, more or less, the, it will be developed into a fully developed plan for the long-range development of the SWAT meet and the surrounding properties. So just want to let you know that the kickoff, on the staff side, will start tomorrow, I believe, or Thursday, yes, Thursday, and then it will go out for the full public outreach, as you heard, for the North Paramount, we're going to get a lot of public feedback. And that concludes my presentation.
Thank you, Mr. King. How big is that area? Do you know the?
I wanted to say 66 acres. That's, that pops in my mind, more or less. Oh, yes, so south is Somerset Boulevard, north is Rosecrans, east is Paramount Boulevard, west is the Union Pacific Railroad way.
Very large. I drove up the property. Any comments?
No.
Comments from staff?
No, sir.
In that case, we move to adjourn our meeting to our August 2 at 6:00, 2023 at 6:00 p.m.
Okay.